Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the July 16, 2024 City Council Chambers for the July 16th meeting. And this evening in the consent agenda are included the minutes from the following meetings, the council minutes, June 24th, 25th, 2024, July 2nd, 2024, Utility Commission, June 26th, 2024, EDA Commission, July 8th, 2024, Community Center Commission, July 8th, Planning Commission, July 9th, Library Board, July 9th, Park and Rec Commission, July 10th, HRA, July 10th. Also included are license applications, amplification permits, Night to Unite on August 6th, Cottonwood County Ag Society, August 7th through the 10th, and the regular bills are also included. Council wish to take action?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ginny, seconded by Scott. Are there any discussion questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. We have a couple acknowledgements we're gonna make tonight, and we will do this one first. I would like to, we have a resolution in front of the council, and would someone care to make the motion and second that, and I will be happy to read it. Mr. Hacker.
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution for expressing appreciation for Tim Hacker and Kim Powers.
Just Tim Hacker right now.
Just for Tim Hacker then.
I'll second.
Okay, that resolution, that resolution by Scott and seconded by Jim? Thank you. And it reads, "A resolution expressing sincere appreciation to Tim Hacker for honorable and devoted public service as an EMT for the city of Wyndham, Minnesota. Whereas the city of Wyndham wishes to express grateful recognition and appreciation to Tim Hacker for his untiring and valuable service to the city of Wyndham faithfully rendered as an EMT for 32 years. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Wyndham, Minnesota as follows. The City Council on behalf of its members, city officials, employees of the city of Wyndham, and the citizens of this community extends to Tim Hacker its expressions of appreciation for serving the city well as an EMT, and its best wishes for good health, success, and prosperity in the years to come. That a copy of this resolution be incorporated in the official records of the City of, Council of the city of Wyndham and a copy presented to Tim Hacker adopted the 16th day of July 2024." Roll call, please.
Quaid.
Yes.
Espin. Nelson. Grunig. Benson.
Yes.
I still know how to operate this. It's kinda tough. Seen a lot of stuff. Family is happy that I no longer have a radio or pager. She can sleep at night also. But I want to take the time to thank the city of Wyndham. You guys have been awesome, all the councils. Everything we wanted, we got. We had, we still have state-of-the-art equipment to work with, which means a lot for us, the community members. Without that stuff, we couldn't have, we can't do the job that we can do. So I hope that keeps going when the squad needs some stuff to keep it going, let it buck. Yeah, I want to thank law enforcement. They've been awesome. When just two of us run, they're the, the third responders there. We couldn't do it without them. Dispatchers, hospital staff, firefighters. When we were in the ditches, fire was right there, too. I mean, they saw the same stuff that we did. Yeah, it's been awesome. Got a hell of a bunch of, bunch of people back there. They're, they're doing good. Good job, Kristen, all you guys. Gonna miss you. So, that's all I got to say.
Next, we have a resolution in appreciation to Kim Powers for 31 years. Would a council member wish to introduce that?
I'll introduce that resolution.
I second.
And this resolution states, "City of Wyndham, Minnesota, a resolution expressing sincere appreciation to Kim Powers for honorable and devoted public service as an EMT for the city of Wyndham, Minnesota. Whereas the city of Wyndham wishes to express grateful recognition and appreciation to Kim Powers for her untiring and valuable service to the city of Wyndham faithfully rendered as an EMT for 31 years. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Wyndham, Minnesota as follows. The City Council on behalf of its members, city officials, employees of the city of Wyndham, and the citizens of this community extends to Kim Powers its expressions of appreciation for serving the city well as an EMT, and its best wishes for good health, success, and prosperity in the years to come. That a copy of this resolution be incorporated in the official records of the City Council of the city of Wyndham and a copy presented to Kim Powers adopted the 16th day of July 2024." Prior to calling for a roll call, Kim, two more years than you could beat Tim Hacker. With much appreciation, a roll call, please.
Grunig. Espin. Nelson. Quaid. Benson.
Yes.
Kim? And we thank Kim. Your whole family had put up with this as well.
Yeah.
Through the last 30 years, and that's truly appreciated. I know your family well enough that they cared for what you did.
Yes.
For our community. And that's so important with our almost volunteer work. You know, and just the recognition, it's just a small token of what the city thanks you for. And I'd like to offer you the same.
Tim said it all. It's what the heavy heart that I decided to retire, but it was my second love, and my family was very supportive. I couldn't have done it without them. And great people to work with, like Tim said, the fire, the police, the hospital. We had had and have an awesome relationship. Not a lot of city services can say that. I mean, we all backed each other, we supported each other, and we protected each other. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, public comment. William Hanson. If, is that William? Yep, up to, yep, up to the table and push the button there, you'll see a red button. Yep, and this will be in regards to flood-related permits.
Is that it?
That's it.
Yeah, I just wanted to come in down and talk about something. I, I'm in the process of, like a lot of people, rehabbing my home. And I was fortunate enough, at least because my bank insisted I have flood insurance, so I do have flood insurance. And I had FEMA come through, and I think the estimate is about $18,000 to $20,000 in damages with a $2,000 deductible. And then I've got contents that I gotta deal with. I started to replace stuff. I replaced a furnace, and I replaced a hot water heater, and there's an electrical panel, and then some other stuff. But I was surprised I needed to get a permit to replace a furnace I replaced two years ago. That was my concern. I wasn't upgrading, I didn't go to a newer model. Same furnace, same situation. And I know that somebody sent me something about it's state law and that type of stuff. But I think there's a lot of people, and you guys know better than the facts on that, but a lot of my neighbors had a lot of damage and don't have flood insurance. And even 50 bucks is a big deal, or 55 bucks is a big deal. And I guess I just wanted to go on record that a permit for replacing something that's two and a half years old, and I bought the permit, or got the permit initially from Andy, and no one ever looked at it. You know, no one came and looked at the furnace where it was installed, or the air conditioning where it was installed. I did get a visit from Todd today to look at it. But I'm just wondering if there shouldn't be some method of forgiveness for this, this cash that's going out for people to replace. I think there's probably a lot of furnaces that have to be replaced, or a lot of stuff that has to be done. And it's not really upgrading, there may be some upgrading that goes on, but in my case, it was two and a half years ago, I put in a, you know, all-new air conditioning, all-new furnace, you know, that type of stuff, and certainly qualified for rebates. And I can certainly do this, I'm not, it's more the principle, the idea, that you're doing something, and sometimes they issue a permit and they come out, or they don't come out. And I've done a number of things to my home. I re-insulated it, got, bought, got the permit, and no one came and looked at it. You know, I mean, it's busy, because it's probably pulled in a lot of different directions. But I would think that there's gotta be somewhere, you know, to help out those people that need help on this. I certainly am gonna end up paying it, but it just doesn't seem right with all the stuff going on. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. One thing regarding that, and I'll just make the statement while William's still here. Actually, I would like to just send that message to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would, I would like them to at least just review, read it. I'm sure it's according to the, our rules and regulations why this is happening. This is a little bit beyond a unique situation that happens once in a lifetime, but now we've had three in 10 years. So I'd just like, just a discussion. I'm not asking for action by them, but a review of that and see how these type of situations fit into what currently is our code and requirements of obtaining permits and whatnot. That's all I would ask, if they would be willing to take a look at that. Okay? Department heads. Wow. They're gonna wait for some other items tonight, or, okay. Night to Unite proclamation. We have a proclamation that I would ask for the Night to Unite, if the council would introduce that. Ginny has volunteered to read it.
I would introduce the resolution.
I'll second.
Ginny.
Wyndham's Night to Unite proclamation. Whereas Minnesota Crime Prevention Association, AAA, and local law enforcement agencies are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence awareness program entitled Night to Unite on August 6, 2024. And whereas Night to Unite is designed to get to know one another in the city of Wyndham, building neighborhood involvement by bringing police and community together and bringing awareness to crime prevention and local law enforcement efforts. And whereas Night to Unite provides opportunities to celebrate the ongoing work of law enforcement and neighborhoods in Wyndham by working together to fight crime and victimization and increase public safety for all citizens. And whereas the Department of Corrections, Cottonwood County probation, the Southwest Crisis Center play a vital role in assisting the Cottonwood County Sheriff and the Wyndham Police Department through joint drug, crime, and violence prevention efforts in Wyndham and supporting Night to Unite 2024 locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Wyndham be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact of their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Wyndham. Whereas local law enforcement, community partnership, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes for Night to Unite program. Now there it be resolved by the City Council of Wyndham, Minnesota, that Tuesday, August 6, 2024 is designated as Night to Unite in Wyndham, Minnesota. And the citizens of Wyndham are encouraged to support and participate in Wyndham's 18th Annual Night to Unite dated the 16th day of July 2024.
Thank you, Ginny. Roll call, please.
Nelson. Grunig. Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Espin.
And that resolution carries, and thank you to all those members mentioned in that resolution, we appreciate that. And I wanted to say, this is perfect timing for this resolution. We need a Night to Unite, and the United States of America should do the same more often. So thanks Ginny for your involvement in this, and you had some comments.
Yes, just a couple things. Night to Unite this year, we try to do a theme every year, and the theme this year is gonna be celebrating volunteerism. So we really want to celebrate how our community has come together, how people have come out and volunteered. But we want to encourage that this volunteerism continue, that it not just be for the flood, it not just be for critical incidents, that we volunteer all year round, that that's, it makes us feel good to give, and I encourage people to do that. And so there's gonna be organizations downtown on that August 6 night that are nonprofit organizations looking for people to volunteer. So even how big or small you can volunteer, just interact and talk with what organizations and places that are out there that are looking for volunteers, that's maybe something you could be involved in. But we also want to celebrate just Wyndham coming together this summer. It's been a great event. So please come down that night. But then I also would make a request to council. That is also a council meeting night, and our Night to Unite event goes from 5:00 to 7:00. And so I would like to make a request to start the council meeting on Tuesday, August 6 at 7:30.
Does the council, council wish to take action on the request by a council member, Quaid?
I'll make a motion to accept the request, starting the early meeting. Late, late meeting, sorry.
I would second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the start time of the next council meeting, which is, what was the date again? 6th, August 6th, to 7:30 PM. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, flood emergency update, information update. Tiffany? You've been delegated the Information Officer, information to disseminate to the public.
Okay, thank you. Tiffany Lamb, Economic Development Director. The last week's been busy. We've had FEMA and state officials here in Wyndham for preliminary damage assessment for the individual assistance program for three separate days. So we've had four different teams actually out here between those three days, and we were able to keep them quite busy. We did end up assessing over 200 homes. We had 95 major damaged homes by their criteria that they use nationwide, and seven destroyed homes by the criteria they use nationwide. They did recommend that we take them into the most heavily hit areas, and thankfully we had the data to do that. I'd just like to take a moment to say thank you to all of our community members that were very, very diligent with turning in their local damage assessment forms. That was very, very critical in being able to actually get FEMA out there to the right areas and to be able to have this level of information available so that they can make a very informed decision on the level of damage that they saw when they're looking at whether or not to recommend that there is IA available. I will say that they were surprised by the severity of the damage that they, they did see in Wyndham, and it continued to be, you know, we've got more damage, you can come back and we can, we can sample more. But it seemed as if they, they were at a place where they felt that they had seen a sufficient amount to make a recommendation at the point that we cut off on Monday evening. So very grateful to have had those teams out there. We were in the first three counties that they actually had teams in, so grateful to have had them choose to come to our community right in the beginning of doing their preliminary damage assessments. That means that they were able to really be able to even see some of the local damage and the severity of it. And I think that that goes a really long way with them being able to actually get a feel for, for what happened. They were able to view our significant number of, of sandbags, our sandbag mountains that we have at this point on the curbs and in people's property, as well as freshwater lines still on people's homes. So I'm grateful that we were able to have them out here quite quickly. One thing that I did learn from FEMA staff is that one inch of water in someone's home can generate $10,000 to $25,000 in damage, and that really goes off of their square footage. A thousand square feet with one inch of water is around 10,000. A 2,500 square foot home with one inch of water is around 25,000. So that's pretty significant when you're looking at 102 homes that had generally 18 inches or greater of water, and that's just an exponential effect. So they were able to see several million dollars worth of damages in the local community as they're making their recommendations. So I feel that that was quite helpful for them to get out there quickly. As we're going along on this, there are 22 states, or 22 counties in the state that are currently under the federal disaster declaration for public assistance. So for city and county and state expenses to be basically covered through the, the federal programs through FEMA. And they have to be able to get to all of those communities. We're in the first group, so they did stress that there could be a little bit of a lag before we do actually hear what the status of that is going to be, just because they have a lot of ground to cover. I am grateful that we were in the first group, because like I said, they got to see it fresh, but it does mean that there could be a little lag. In addition, there are 20 other counties that are still trying to get in for the same group to be in the PA declaration, and eventually some of those will probably be able to also have these preliminary damage assessments for the IA program for homeowners. Looking forward, if we do get that declaration, FEMA staff did share that what they will do is actually set up disaster recovery centers in each of the counties that receive IA. So if we were to receive IA for Cottonwood County, then they'll set up a disaster resource or disaster recovery center, and that will have a variety of resources available. So just a few that they listed are the FEMA grants that go to property owners, SBA loans that can go to homeowners or to business owners, and those are low-interest disaster recovery loans. They do have mental health resources available in their disaster recovery, as well as a variety of other resources, including severe needs assistance, which is for folks that are basically displaced and have immediate needs for, example, for, for access to food or to healthcare, as well as short-term rental assistance. So there's a variety of programs that it opens up when we get to the point of having that declaration, hopefully, and then being able to have that disaster recovery center. The biggest benefit of that is that it's, it's staffed by folks that are trained in all of those programs, and they'll be able to, to really handle the, the capacity of those needs. So we're hoping for obviously a quick declaration for IA, given the severity of the damage that they saw. And we do kind of know what the step forward is and what that looks like once they are ready to set up that disaster recovery center. In the meantime, one of the pieces of information that FEMA staff and state officials said is helpful for them to have access to, because it can help with some of the speeding up, the expediting of the process, is having access to basically, how many people do you have displaced? How many people are out of their current home, are not at their current address at this point? And so we've actually identified over 50 individuals, I believe we're at 52 at this point, individuals that are currently staying with friends, or they're staying with family members. There are folks that have their families split up amongst family houses right now, just because they have larger family sizes. There's a group home right now that until they know that we're out of this action stage on the water levels, are not comfortable returning their four medically fragile adult residents to their group home on River Road, just in case, out of a abundance of caution. They're continuing to, to be displaced at this point to Sioux Falls. So there's a variety of reasons that people are displaced. I have provided that information to both FEMA officials and state officials, so they're aware. So hopefully that will help with some of the expediting and hopefully getting into an early group of this. If there's any questions, then I'm more than happy to take those at this time.
Yeah, Tiffany, what is the total number at this point of damaged homes based on the assessment forms?
So we've received over 400 damage assessment forms. As far as the ones that I have input into our system, we, we have over 380. As far as the ones that I have input into our system, we have over 380 something of those, and I have ones on my desk. There's a couple of folks that filled them out and just said, "We're unaffected." And that is good, because then we know, right? We know that that's not a good one to sample if we're going down their streets, that we don't need to stop there for these PDAs. We do think we're done with those, by the way. But we're well over 400. Off of the state demographers' numbers from last August, we have 2,000 households. Now, that does include both within single-family homes and multifamily homes. So that includes, for example, our apartment buildings. So Lakeside Apartments would have over 40 separate households by those numbers. So while we're, I would say, over 25% of households sampled, we're probably closer to pushing 50% of the actual single-family homes that are sampled by our damage assessments. We've just had a spectacular response to those, and I'm very grateful to the community for having been so diligent about filling those out. Like I said, we could not have had the results that we did and been able to have such early response from FEMA with this if we did not have the high response on our damage assessments locally. So I'm very grateful to everybody that's filled those out, that has shared them, that's encouraged their friends, family, neighbors to fill those out, because that is truly how we work together to get access to this program. It's not something that just city staff and county staff can go out and so quickly be able to be at a good place on the sampling. It really takes community effort in having filled those out.
Tiffany, do you still encourage residents to still fill them out and get them to you if there's some that just haven't done it yet?
I do absolutely encourage that anybody that has not reported their damage, still do so. We're still taking a log of that, and that's still information that they'll use when they are considering whether or not to recommend the individual assistance program. Now, I did make FEMA and state officials well aware that I have enough data at this point, where if they wanted to come back for another day, I could keep them just as busy and be delivering the same level of results in terms of severity. And they believe we are at a sufficient point in terms of their damage assessments actually needing to walk it. There's a little reading between the lines on there maybe, but they do take into account what we have in terms of our data. And I have provided that they have access, as I put them in, they have live access to the responses to our damage assessments. And so they have seen enough of what we've told them is accurate information to really use that as valid information, that is true and accurate to the best of the evidence that they had in the over 20 contact hours that we had with their teams.
And could you touch base on the most current information on the sandbag pickup, as you're aware, just to update when that's going to happen and those type of things?
Absolutely. So the current projections for the Des Moines River actually have us going out of the action stage now, early on Thursday. So we're moving up incrementally, day by day. Earlier this week, we were thinking Saturday, maybe. Now it looks closer to Thursday. Once we have that, we'll put out that information to the whole community once we're out of this action stage, which is basically the point at which the depth of the river is measuring below 17 feet. We technically are still in an action stage with flooding until we get to that point. We recommend that nobody moves their sandbags off of their property until we are beyond that point, just because a rain event could lead to some additional water levels. And we don't want folks to not have those available, just in case their property does end up needing them. That said, we do anticipate being able to start picking those up in the week of Monday, July 22nd. So those will be curbside pickup. And we don't know specifically which day that will start. That said, we do have volunteer efforts. We already have a large group of volunteers in the community that are not tired somehow. They put out so many sandbags. They've cleaned 90 houses, and folks continue to come back and show up for their friends, their family members, their neighbors, and help them do what they need to. And they're, so there's a significant volunteer force that is going to be working to help get sandbags to the curb. And so that will help ensure that folks are hopefully ready by that 20-second date. But it'll be sometime that week.
Thank you. And then, while you're there yet, I would like to talk about the next bullet item, is the resolution extending the emergency declaration. At this point, you know, I'm, my question, and kind of to Tiffany, is, is there any reason why we need to extend a resolution at this time that you can see because of any financial or federal items that may come about? Do you see anything that would require us to extend it for any reason? As far as regulations and items that we may have to act on?
In relation to having reviewed the public assistance program and the individual assistance program, I don't see any need to. Our responses for our damage assessments, for example, start on the 21st. They can continue to go through any time span, even beyond the end of our current declaration. So I don't see any drawback to allowing it to end. The only thing to consider is that it is, there is still the action stage until potentially up to Thursday. That said, we are rapidly approaching the exit of the action stage.
Steve, do you have an opinion?
I agree with what Tiffany said. So, but if you did have a rain event or something happen after this expires, you can always go back to the process and have a mayor declared three-day emergency, and then the council has time to act after that. So I would agree. If it's not needed for P.A. and it's not needed for IA, I don't see any reason for continuing it.
That's what I wanted to hear. The council wish to take action on that item, the resolution extending? There would actually be no, it will expire tomorrow?
It expired, no action needed.
No action needed. Does a council want to take action? Okay, hearing none, it's assumed that the council will not take action to extend. Now we're going to get into the funding options.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Funding options. Steve put together quite a list of options for the council to consider, one of which I did talk to the council about, and there's some updates that Steve will give. I think the best way, unless the council would like some other process, I'd like to, Steve, at least briefly go through each one so the public knows what we're talking about here. And then if there's any question on these, let's take it under that heading, okay, of his explanation. So there will be a need for some funds if we do what should be on our wish list of some items that I mentioned before with the levy, maybe some floodgates, work with the DNR. We're talking about Red Leaf Court. The council took action on some of that. And so funding will be needed from some source. So, Steve, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. As you stated, there's some projects that kind of came up for flood mitigation, immediate and some out into the future. So there will be some grant opportunities, but there's also some things that will probably have to be funded here locally, either because the funds just aren't available or the timeframe doesn't fit. If we go through some FEMA flood mitigation thing, there may be some dollars there, but there's match. Then there's U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, DNR, and, you know, quite a delay in getting some of those funds. So the mayor asked me to put a few things together, just to kind of go over, just kind of an overview of what options the council has at your disposal if you want to fund some flood mitigation projects. So the first one, just kind of the standard thing that you've done in the past for street projects, things like that, is looking at long-term debt, some kind of general obligation debt to fund these things. Like we do, as I mentioned, street projects, that's fairly straightforward. We sell bonds, they go out 20 years, interest rates about, well, about 4% right now on those. And we'd work with Ellers, who's our financial advisor, on issuing those bonds. Other thing you have available to you for debt financing is like use of USDA. We can use USDA community facilities loan. And the benefit of those is that they go out to 40 years, which is twice as long as the debt general obligation bond issues. They also are advantageous in that they can be paid off at any time without penalty, whereas the bonds cannot. Interest rate, there might be, just maybe, right now I did check on their website, and they're at a minimum of four. And a lot of that's dependent on community demographics. So it's probably very similar, if not maybe just a touch higher than what we get in the general obligation bond. So anybody have questions on debt? You've done a couple of those before, so you're probably fairly familiar, but... Okay. Grant applications, again, that's an application either through federal, state, or other resources that can be public or private. Grants, like Riemlich Foundation is one that's private. They have been very generous dollar-wise. You know, some of our projects could be fairly large in scale, and so it would have to be a combination. USDA does have some grants. We've used that for a few things lately for a fire department. U.S. Fish and Wildlife has some, but those are pretty particular. You know, they would more come into play if there was like a trail involved or something like that, in addition to the levy or something like that. FEMA has hazard mitigation funds, those will come out. So those are, that's an opportunity. DNR funding, as Mayor mentioned, that was something that they had mentioned, maybe floodgates, things like that, work with DNR, MNDOT to get something like that. There are match requirements for that. There's also a fairly long process to get to applications and regulatory. Those are just some of the pros and cons of those. State bonding, as I noted in here, we have pursued state bonding for a number of things. We did not get any for the fire hall. We did not get any for Red Leaf Court, where we've tried twice. We did get some state bonding money for the removal of the dam in town. And we also did get some state bonding money for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant. So those are two places that have been successful. Last year, the even-numbered years are traditional bonding years, but the state did not even do a bonding bill. So that funding is, shall we say, intermittent and unreliable at best. But it is an opportunity, and there are some dollars that do get allocated, so... Now, with the legislature not passing a bonding bill, there may be some appetite for the legislature to do a small bonding bill in 2025, because they didn't do one this year. However, we also have an election in 2024, and it's also a state budget year, so they get very busy working on budget stuff, so... But there's a possibility there. Anybody have any questions on state bonding, kind of how the process works? It's just that you would submit a bonding request, usually those are June or July, which we did last, in June of '23, for the '24 bonding bill. Those get carried forward, so that, so will still be in the hopper from last session's request. I anticipated more will come in this next year. Then there's legislation that's proposed by, usually your local legislator, Jack, it's a bill, and then that goes through that hearing process. We did have the Senate Bonding Committee out on-site last year. They were out and actually did look at our project at Red Leaf Court proposal. And then I believe John and Tiffany presented to the House Bonding Committee over in Worthington when they had the stop in southwest Minnesota. So, so those are avenues that we've taken and tried, and some success, sometimes not. So, any questions on those? Okay. This one's probably a little bit longer, that's why there's a little bit more information in your packet on this. Local option sales tax is something a number of communities have enacted over the last number of years. Mankato has one, Fairmont has one, Worthington has one, Marshall has one. The legislature, it basically controls this process. You have to, at the current way the process is set up, is cities have to request from the legislature, a, basically a bill to approve a local option sales tax. If the legislature approves it, it then comes back to the community for a general election for your voters. And then, once that is passed, it goes to the Department of Revenue, then they set it up, and then they start collecting. They have a lot of requests that came in the last few years. And so the legislature did several things, as I point out here, one of which is they tried to make it more restrictive and look at projects of regional significance. So that's basically, they're trying to limit uses for common infrastructure, streets, things like that, because there are other avenues to fund those types of projects. So they're looking at mostly recreational items. So if you look at Mankato, they've used it for their recreational programs, parks. New Ulm uses theirs for their ice arena and other community facility there. Worthington used it for the Prairie Center in Worthington, the YMCA and parks. So that's kind of the common use for these. However, you can use them for other things if you can prove a regional significant aspect to it, to the legislature. As I mentioned, legislature did see a lot of these come through the last few years. And so the legislature actually enacted a moratorium from even considering local option sales taxes through the 1st of June, 2025, which pushes them through the next legislative session, basically telling communities, "We're not even going to look at them." So that is in place, as is everything. There are exceptions, so you could always, you know, go to your legislature, propose a bill, and try to move it forward to those committees, but you're kind of swimming upstream against it as they have that moratorium. Now, could the election change some of those committee chairs or the opinion? Who knows? But right now, there is a bit of a long shot. Yes, Mayor?
Okay. Regarding your comment on regional significance, I look at it as Highway 60 and 62, Highway 60, 60, 71, and 62, for a period of time were closed. And if this project that we are talking about of a levy through Island Park and work with the DNR on some floodgates to help prevent those closures in the future, I would guess that's probably regional significance?
I think that would be an argument you would make if you decide to move something forward as a council. As I was saying, I did bring this up to the Coalition Greater Minnesota Cities. They had a legislative wrap-up in Worthington last Wednesday evening. I did talk to Marty Seifer, who had done some lobby work for us before, and to Bradley Peterson, who is the head of the Coalition Greater Minnesota Cities. Both of them did feel that it is an uphill push, very much so. But never say never. You know, you don't know how those folks would react to it. Obviously, it's an emergency situation. You're trying to help yourselves through this. So they said, "You have a good story to tell." But whether that would be able to overcome the legislative moratorium outside of the process, because we'd be going backwards against the process by trying to go to the general election first in '24, and then to... against the process by trying to go to the general election first in '24, and then to the legislature, but I would think that would maybe strengthen your hand if the voters have already said, yes, let's do this, we want to move forward. But again, that's the, the chance you take with the folks. So what I did is, I did just put together, we looked at this, the city council looked at this about 10 years ago in 2023, or 2013, I'm sorry, about looking at this for opportunity to raise some money, either for emergency services facility or other, some other uses that had come up. And we looked at what, how much local option sales tax could be generated in Worthing, or in Wyndham, and at that time, the county, or the Minnesota Department of Revenue does retail sales by county, they don't do it by community and communities of our size. So looking at Cottonwood County retail sales, I included that in, in your packet for information, I can just flip to it quick. Let's see, one more page here. So, I'm trying to make this a little bigger so people can see it. So in Cottonwood County, the retail sales are that 73, taxable retail sales is, it's this column, 73,123,000. And of that, the Minnesota Department of Revenue, last, in 2013, had estimated that 78% of retail sales are in Wyndham for Cottonwood County. So when I went back and looked at what could possibly be generated, I took that 73,123,000, I mult, actually just multiplied it by 75%, just to be a little more conservative on, on the amount that we might be able to generate. Click on up, so here's this number, which is this number, 75%. A 1% sales tax would then generate about four, about $548,000 at 1%. Most of them, of the sales taxes that you see across the state are either half a percent or 1%. So there's a, kind of a range there. So this actually would raise some, some pretty good dollar figures if this was a direction you wanted to go. Yes, Mayor?
I just felt appropriate, this is a time for some, some discussion, that this is one option that I, I just want to say that I would be in favor of the council looking at. I say that, and the difference between that and the other items is, I look at it as that 548,000 is not all coming from our community. 25%, 20 to 25% of that will come from people passing through town, and I think that's an important thing. You know, they utilize our roads as well, our state roads, they come through town, stop at our convenience stores, our fast food restaurants, our businesses downtown, and do purchases. Other communities do the same thing and take advantage of that when they put on a 1% sales tax. So that's the only one in this that I see an outright, it's not called a grant, but it's a contribution from people with outside, outside of our community, not just all of our taxpayers. Sorry, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, that is my next, next point in the mail, so. Sorry, you're reading ahead, that's fine. So yeah, that, so that's a good, a good point. As I pointed out, or mentioned earlier, local option sales taxes are usually 1/2 to 1% depending on your location. And then what I put in italics in here, you know, just kind of a process, you know, due to the timeframes, right, and it has to be done at a general election. We have a general election in 2024. And as I mentioned, this is kind of backwards to the current legislative process, where they want you to go to legislature, get approval first, then to your voter. If you so chose to take a shot at this, we would be going, kind of, again, we're already swimming upstream against the moratorium and those type of things, but we would be able to put it on the ballot yet in 2024 if you so chose. The deadline for a ballot question is the 13th of August to the county auditor. And so you have another council meeting to kind of think about this, should you want to move it forward. So this is not looking for any action on any of these things tonight, this is informational. So if you did decide you wanted to move ahead, then it would be to put a ballot question on for the voters this fall, something fairly tightly compact, you know, very short sunset period, you know, maybe five years, 1% for flood mitigation, you know, so that's kind of a very tight use and timeframe on it. And then should you want to extend it later, you can always go, you know, ask the voters for a renewal of it for the same purpose or another purpose. You know, if you want to do a pool down line or a new, you know, something else, park, regional park, trail connections, things like that, you could take that to the voters later. Again, it always is subject to voter approval. It's not just something the council can do on its own, you would be subject to voter approval each time, so. So I've got that in, I had the, the, just kind of the process in there as well, and then I also had provided you a memo from 2013 that the city council had enacted to pursue a local option sales tax, and so this is kind of what it would look like. And so what the council did at that time was approving a local sales tax up to 1% and an excise tax and $20 per vehicle, so that's how the vehicle sales work. And the sales tax would be used to pay for the cost of public facilities, and an option for capitalizing revolving loan fund for the EDA, those were the uses the last time. And then, at that time, we estimated approximately $4 million would be raised over a period of 15 years or earlier, whichever came first, 15 years or the 4 million. And at that time, we were going to raise under 300,000, it was between 250 and 300,000 was our projection at that time, so. So that's kind of the local option sales tax piece. Other, any, any other questions on that one? Okay. Oh, sorry, councilman.
That never went to a vote back in 2013?
It, it did not. We went to the legislature, we got it into a tax bill, and that got vetoed. And so the entire tax bill, not just our piece. But so, at that time, it was, the legislative process has gone several different ways. At that time, it was same as it is now, go to the legislature first, get it approved, then come back to the voters. So we were shooting for the 2014 election at that point, okay? Then the legislature changed the process and said, go to the voters first, then come to us, you know, which I thought made a little more sense, and then they turned around and switched it back and said, but no, you need our permission first, then you can go to your voters. So the changes over the last 10 years, the third time has changed, but just this way, this way, and then back again, so.
But on, on this process, we'd be waiting two years?
Yep. If you, if it goes this way, you can't request a local option sales tax if you go by what the current legislative moratorium is, you can't request it until the beginning of 2026. So it'd be January, February of '26, you'd make the request to the legislature. If they approve it, it would be May, then in '26, then you'd take it to the voters in November of '26, tell the Department of Revenue in December of 2026, they need 90 days to even start thinking about it, they would then get it enacted in early of '27, and then you would start collecting your money. This doesn't all come at once, it comes in increments over the year as the sales taxes are collected. So you'd have, you'd be at the beginning of '28 before you would have one year's full amount of revenue.
Can, can you be as ambiguous as just saying flood recovery and mitigation? Or do you have to have specific projects?
So for the legislature, you have to make the argument that the projects you're proposing have regional significance, right? So it's kind of up to you how you want to phrase that. There's a lot of, lot to be said about putting very specific things in, because then the voters are, okay, we're approving or not X, Y, and Z. So if you wanted to go down this road, that's one of the options the council has, you can either say flood mitigation efforts, because right now, you know, not everything is engineered out, we don't have a laundry list of projects, you have two or three kind of in the hopper, but you have a whole list of things that we would like to address, you know, but those take a little time to develop. So if it's for flood mitigation efforts, and it's a fairly tight window and tight scope, you know, as far as the term, the duration, and the amount of dollars, that, you know, hopefully would offset some of that ambiguity in, in the, in the ballot question. But if you have specific projects you want to pinpoint, you can certainly put that in the ballot question.
I'm just wondering, how does this affect our local businesses? So do they collect the additional taxes and then they pay that in? Or do they pay that to their state taxes, and then the state taxes turn around and cut the city of Wyndham a check, or how does that part work?
They'll, they'll collect it the same way that regular state sales taxes are done. They'll collect it at point of sale, remit those taxes to the state, and the state will turn it around and separate them out and send it back to us. Okay, a couple more here, quick. Stormwater utility fee, this is something we kind of talked about one other time as a council. City will be going over 5,000, hopefully at some time in the near future, and will be getting gas tax revenue, but also what comes with that is MS4, which is Minnesota stormwater requirements. And so, communities generally, when you go through that type of requirement, there's a stormwater management fee that gets put into place, it is basically a util, stormwater utility is how it's permitted in statute. I included a couple of examples from the city of Monticello and city of St. Peter, just because I know more people have stuff, but they had some stuff on their website that was fairly well explained of what it is and how, what their formula is on charging for that thing, so. But that's something else we could possibly use to use for flood mitigation, because it relates to stormwater runoff, those kind of things. So I think you can make the, make the case that this would be a possibility. Use of general fund reserves, again, something you've done in the past to fund a few things. Keep in mind, you know, that, you know, we've got a state auditor recommends 35 to 50% of your general fund expenditures to be kept in reserve. Your city council policy is 35 to 60. That helps us, you know, when we bond, that we can show a strong financial position and hope, and then we get a little better interest rate that way. You also have some projects that you've committed to funding, right now with, without having another revenue source, so right now you've got a couple hundred thousand dollars, unless there's some other revenue that comes in, that you're already kind of committed to to move these couple of flood mitigation projects down the line. So I'm anticipating that's going to be coming from the general fund, so that will, you know, pull your, pull you back a bit from where you're at. Will still be within our range, but it's not an, an ending pot of dollars, and so what you spend out of it today takes a long time to build back up. But you've got some very good, you know, emergency type of projects now, so using those dollars is certainly, you know, prudent. And then lastly, and there, last on the agenda for, or on the, remember for a reason, raising property tax, which is never popular for anything, but if you so chose to do something like that, you know, we levy about $2.5 million last, this last year for a property tax levy, and 1% of that is $25,000. So the 200,000 that you've committed to for some flood mitigation stuff already, if you wanted to recover that, you know, versus taking out of the general fund, you're, that's 8% tax levy increase rate there just for those things. And that's not taking consideration any future street projects that have been brought up for '25, or for any escalation and inflationary costs, labor, goods, services, things like that. So it's an option that is your primary way to raise revenue, and you all know that, but I wanted to include it as, as an option, because that is certainly within your tool belt to use if you so chose. It's not an option I think anybody wants to take, but barring some of these other ones, this is one of them that you've got available, so. Anybody have any questions on these last couple that I can help answer?
No, I have a question for the council. Does anybody want to raise the property tax levy by 10%? I didn't think so. One question.
I gotta, I gotta, don't we have a possibility coming yet this fall where we may have a windfall type of thing?
I, I, I think I skipped over payment in one of these, payment in lieu of tax, I believe that's where you're thinking, if I'm not mistaken.
We may have another partner in that?
Yeah, I think I.
You did skip over that.
No, it's, it's in here someplace, I just don't remember where I put it.
Well, just go off the.
But anyway, yeah, sorry. So yeah, payment of tax, I mean, we do get a transfer from the liquor store, as you know, of 100,000 to pay for part of the emergency services facility debt, and also then to supplement the general fund. They did just undertake a rehab and renovation project, as you know, and so a lot of the free cash flow there has been committed. Electric Department is the other one that's been, you know, contribute payment of tax.
That is.
And, yeah, and they've contributed a quarter million dollars a year, that's still continuing. Obviously, they've generated, let's see, I guess the word, generated a lot of expense this last year, working on our transmission line, putting a new generation building and a new truck shed. But the reason that they pay payment of taxes where water, wastewater don't, is that the electric and the lecturer are a lot of times private utilities in many, in many cities, they're not municipal utilities. And so private, if they were private entities, they would pay tax, and so that's really the basis for why those two pay tax. And I know you have another one that's been brought up, that, you know.
Wyndham Mary Health.
Yeah, it was Wyndham, you had a discussion with Wyndham Mary Health during that discussion on expansion and the new tower, but I don't know if you've really gotten too far down the road on, on that one, and, you know, want to see where, they're just starting construction, we don't know how that's going to end up, and where they're going to be at either, so I don't know that that's a immediate, sorry, long answer to your question, but I don't know that's a this fall type of thing, but that's completely in your purview.
I don't think that's really what I was talking about, but.
Oh.
One of the buildings that we've rent, that we own, that something should be coming up, that we just invested a lot of money in a while back.
Are you talking, Jim, are you talking about the apartments, or, I mean?
I'm talking about the hospital.
Yeah, that's what we were talking.
Yeah, we're just talking about the hospital, yep.
Because that was going to be on the agenda for this August, September during budget discussions, and we were, and we told them that it would be this fall, and that's what our intent still is. In the situation there is, they're in, I think you're going to hear the same thing that you heard before, but we have to ask the questions. Their, their comment, you know, after everything got running, you know, right now, I mean, you've seen the forecast that they gave us at the council meeting, there wasn't a lot of profit built in there, and we asked the question then, and we'll talk about it this fall, and so that's what we'll do.
The only reason I mention it, because I know we got this August deadline coming up, you know, that we're going to have to decide something, whatever it is we do.
No, and I, I wanted to, just to enter, Steve, that maybe you want to check on, I was thinking. because, for instance, and this is probably specific to Red Leaf Court, but as you've stated, others have stated, a lot of that water comes from township water coming into our community.
Right. And I believe that city attorney had also let you know that according to Minnesota law, if you're downhill, yep, so, but I think there's some discussion that could be had with those folks, but that's been held in the past and hasn't been overly fruitful.
And that's not really where I'm going is asking them for money. There's a plan, the Des Moines River, one watershed, one plan. And they have a lot of money for drinking water protection, river protection, you know, from flood events, erosion, that sort of thing. It might be wise to talk with Kay Gross and ask her about, about that and see if they have any programs that fit for helping mitigate some of that floodwater turbidity, different items that the Des Moines River is taking on. That was just my thought as one other thing to add to your list. Because I don't think there's an easy answer to all any of this. I do like the option of having the voters decide. You know, I think it's, it depends on how much, many dollars we're talking about. If, if we had a plan, I'd be, I think, and this is without hearing from any residents, but we don't want to go through this again. How do we, how do we get by that? We're not going to stop the rain. We have to do something with our facilities. And the ones we have talked about previously, the levy through Island Park to mitigate that, that stopped one heck of a lot of water and a lot of damage that went into our community. We shouldn't let that happen again. I think everybody would agree. We shouldn't let that happen. And so if we, if we tackle that one, Steve had on his presentation, the DNR, there's some, there's some grants out there for floodgates. That has to be incorporated in there. We also have to remember that it's not only us, there's regional significance, as I said, with Highway 60, 62, 71, is not to close that. And in order to put floodgates in to get the water through town quicker and downstream, we have to work with MINDOT. They've got a four lane highway, yep, four lanes that we'll have to go under and work with MINDOT within their right of way. And Highway 62. So that's a partner, as I look at it. We also have the railroad. That's another bottleneck on this whole stream downstream. And as far as I know, the railroad's got quite a bit of money. That's another partner. That's all I'm saying. I think there's, should be some type of vision to get going on and start studying this, which we are. You know, so that is just a big item right there in itself. We think we can do that, that process of 175,000 and get that initial burn done. That's what we think, you know. And could we, could we do the 175,000? I think we could. And that's why it was brought to the council, that the process starts, and we're working towards that. But how much more than that can we do for the public without raising additional funds? Tough question. So. My question to the council, because there's one deadline in the discussion right now, and that is the next council meeting. If you still want to consider a 1% sales tax to get ready for the ballot, and, you know, can that be canceled, Steve, at some point before?
If it's on the ballot, it's on the ballot.
It's on the ballot, okay.
Say you said 5%. No, no, I'm just saying, you have to still charge the 5% rather than say, come back and say, well, we really don't need that. I mean, drop it down. I know I, it's like, like so many things, you can, you can never go up, but you could always come down, you know?
Well, the way, the way that works, it's, basically, there's 1% is probably the most you're going to be able to do by statute. So, but that's why you put the duration and the dollar amount in it. Because if you collect more than the projected, then it just ends earlier. So if you said, just for discussion sake, you know, five years times that 550,000 I had, five years is 250,000, 200, 2, 2,000,750,000. So if you just said, we're going to raise 2.5 million over five years, or that 5, 2.5 million, whichever comes first, that would then stop that sales, sales tax at a certain amount of time. Now, if you didn't collect as much, let's just say came in at 400,000, then you're only going to collect 2 million. So you just base it on that projection, the time and the duration of that sales tax, and then how much you collect, so.
But like you say, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't get anything until '28.
If we go through the normal process, if we go through this, let's just say, all this works out, you know, the ballot, the voters approve it, the legislature consents to consider it, it passes, you're probably at best looking at a May 2025 approval from the legislature. The Department of Revenue gets 90 days. So then you're looking at June, July, August, they'll probably start collecting in September, October of '25, and you'll start seeing your money start to come shortly thereafter. So it'd be the last couple of months of '25 before you're going to see a nickel of this money, more than likely.
More than we got now.
Again, no, this is a long shot to get there, and it's probably going to cost some dollars to do it. We're probably going to need some professional help. And I don't mean mental health counseling. We will probably need some, we might need that too, but it's probably some legislative lobbying efforts and those kinds of things. So there will be a price to it as well. But just so you know that going in.
When Tiffany talks about 50% of the homes in Wyndham have some damage, and obviously some of that damage will require loans that are fairly lengthy for those homeowners to go down their path or the road of taxes. Just seems that we're not, that it's not going to be beneficial for those people. It's going to be, they have all that home repair, and then now we're talking about adding some type of a tax. My thought is that we should go down the grant application, the bonding request first. And just based on what the discussion is, because it's, the flood is historic and regional, and you should be able to write a pretty good story on that, I would think. We haven't been successful, I know, in that. But I think that's almost what our first avenue should be.
You know, I would just say, I totally agree with Marvin. I mean, I don't want to put more on, I mean, I know you say some of it comes from other people that come through town, but I don't want to put more on our citizens. And I think too, like you said, I think we have a good story here to write. And I think, you know, Tiffany kind of said that well and what she said as well. So hopefully there's going to be funding and there's going to be things that'll come through for us to help our community out.
I also agree, because at first I thought that 1% was a pretty good idea. And now that I heard what Tiffany says about how many people are affected by this and the amount of dollars that we're going to need to help each other out, I don't know if we can put it on backs to some people that are down and out right now.
Well, I'm going to give you an opinion that I would bet that if you talked to all these people affected by the floods, do you think they want to do this again? Do you think, don't you think they would consider saying yes? Because 75% or let's just say 50% of the people in Wyndham don't have large effects because of the flood. You're going to help your neighbor. You're going to help the people down by Island Park. You're going to help the people that are driving on River Road. This isn't about the right now. This is about the long term, and don't let it happen again. That, to me, is the track that I'm prepared to go down, and I'd be happy to pay for my backyard neighbors who had water in their bas, in their basements. And I would say yes. And I think your community, this is fresh in everyone's mind right now. If you're ever going to vote, so people remember the flood of 2024, now's the time to ask that question, in my opinion. And, you know, I give my opinions to the council. I always have. And I'm just giving you my opinion. I do not disagree with your, it sure feels like you're hitting people when they're down and out. But I think those people will say, fix my problem too. And there's only one way to find that out. Let the, let the council, let the, let the public vote. I think they would support a 1% sales tax if you put it on the ballot for this fall. But it's not going to be foolish spending of that money, and it cannot be. You know, that's a part that would scare me. If I had to decide on voting and I was one of those affected pretty bad, who determines who gets fixed first? You know, you need the 2.5 million dollars. And some, maybe they don't have, you have to realize, some of those may not have fixes for them. Unfortunately, you got to think about that reality. They live along the river. And I feel for them. I seen them. They came out, they refurnished their home down in a floodplain, and now it's gone. But for the amount of people that were affected by the 400 damage assessment forms, you know, it's not going to, it's not going to help the groundwater that falls. It's the projects we can identify. Cottonwood Lake's another one. You know, there's got to be a drainage system that we can figure out there. That's, it just shouldn't happen again. That's, that's my hard thoughts on this, is don't let it happen again. But I respect what you're saying on taxes. I, I do. I respect that. And it does feel that way. But the public can vote it down. I think the neighbors will help neighbors like they have did with all of their volunteerism through this whole process. That's, that's my thought. I got to quit talking. I'm sorry, council. I get on a, I get on a roll.
The one thing about the sales tax idea, it's, I think it ranks higher than the rest of the tax issues, because the individual can control their cost to some point by just simply not spending the money. But if it's like a water or a stormwater tax or those kinds of things, then that's a direct cost that they're going to have. So I would say that the sales tax would rank higher than the rest of the tax issues for me.
Thank you for that acknowledgement, Marv. That's, out of 15 minutes of rambling, that's what I hoped you'd think. This is a council decision. If you're going to do it in August, you need Steve and give him direction to have something ready for your consideration at the next meeting. That is a council decision on how you direct Steve. Any other thoughts then, Steve? But that's what we need to give Steve if we're going to do it.
I mean, we can prepare a resolution like you had for in 2013, council can vote it up or down at the next meeting. But if this is a, you know, we don't want to go there, then let's not wait, you know, spend that time doing it. But it's also fair for these folks to have some time to think about it.
I agree.
So I don't think doing this resolution stuff probably is, you know, wasted effort. But it's, you know, we want to know that we're kind of going down the right path.
Okay. No, council discussion. What do you, the question is tonight, what would you like Steve to do, if anything? The most immediate one that would take action is the 1% sales tax with, which needs the voter okay.
Doesn't have to be 1%, and that dollar amount and duration is up to you guys. So those are, that's a council thing.
Can you draft a resolution with a couple options there, Steve, a fill-in-the-blank type thing?
We can. And do you want to list, if you did, you know, again, this is the guidance, do you want a list of particular projects, you know, which, like I said, we don't have those fully developed at this point. So that's very hard to do. So that's kind of why I was proposing for flood mitigation projects and leaving that as the question. So then you then still have that option to allocate those dollars as those projects can be developed. And there's opportunities that may arise out of different grants that, you know, this one comes up before that one for whatever reason. You know, on one of our bonding that we were successful, quite honestly, on the dam, I believe you were running for the council at that time. You told me, well, that's not one of my priorities to get done. I said, well, I appreciate that, you know, prospective candidate. However, we got the dollars from the bonding bill to do that project. So that's why that opportunity presented itself. So we acted on it.
And I'll stand by my final decision on that, is I'm glad it's not there anymore. It would have been a worse situation than we currently have.
I think, the way I look at it is thankfully, nobody drowned. But one life would have been worth how much in taxes, especially if it was your family. And it very easily could have happened. If it come in the middle of the, you look, you see on TV all the time, these people in these campgrounds, and all of a sudden there's a flash flood, and there's 10 people missing, you know. It could happen. So if you don't do something, what's the answer? I mean, what do you, get everybody to move to East Hill? I don't think that's going to happen.
Well, I'll propose to make a resolution to have Steve to get something set up for the flood litigation for 1% sales tax due to a vote of the people this fall. And if people want us to vote on the next council meeting, please get ahold of us individually and let us know how you guys stand. Because then we know where everybody's at with it. There's no hidden things, or it's not me or her or him or him, it's, it's a Wyndham thing. Wyndham thing. So let's all decide on how we want to do this. And this way the ball's going is, is in the motion. If we do nothing, just sit here and do nothing, we're going to get nothing. So if, if we get the ball rolling and they say stop right now, then the next council meeting, we vote it down. So I, I'll start the resolution and get something going.
Is, do you want that, are you making a motion or you want consent? Okay, that's a motion to proceed?
I was making a motion.
Second by Jim. Is that to, for direction to have Steve look at?
The way I've got it written down is come up with a, a resolution for consideration of a local option sales tax for flood mitigation up to 1% for your consideration at the next meeting. And then you can decide what you want to do.
Yes. And I urge the citizens of Wyndham, people, please get ahold of us. So we know how you guys want to go about this. This is not just our decision, it's our decision.
And if there's, maybe there's some other avenues the public can think of, you know, but I think we've about exhausted what we're aware of. You know, and I, I agree. Let the council know. Let the council know if we move forward with the flood mitigation or not. Marv?
Just so there's a perfectly good understanding. The idea is not to do nothing, but it was to go through the bonding request cycle instead of the tax. It was not to do nothing. Okay?
No, and I, I, I'm not saying that we should stop with that either. Because if the public's, if, if you asked for two and a half million during a bonding bill request, and we got that, I wouldn't ask the public for it, would you? But this is, this one, I think, is because it's time sensitive, if we're going to even have it for a consideration. Right? I mean, that's, I'm still thinking you need to rank these other ones, and I think bonding bill's one. Give us your thoughts. That's a good topic, Marv. We're not stopping there. If it, if it fails, it fails. But we need to still keep working on it. I agree. I think bonding bill's one. I think there should be research on, continue doing what we're doing and coming up with the ideas that Steve gave us, and look into those. It's just this one needs to be done for an option to do it.
I have one question for Steve. Say we go, we do go to a vote this fall, and, and the voters approve the sales tax. And after, after they do, we find another option that, that looks better to us. Do we, can we put the brakes on that after?
If you, if you choose to, to do that and it passed, you still have to go to the legislature and get approval. And so if you decided to not go to the legislature and get approval, that would be stopping it because you need that legislative approval to move it forward. So, well, if you, if it, if it went to the ballot this fall, is what Mr. Espon is saying, and passed the voters, you go to the 2025 legislature, and he's saying if something came up in between time, couldn't you stop it? That would be the way it would be stopped, is just not ask the legislature for approval. You know, that, that is the situation you get put in. But if you, you know, get fairly far down the line, let's say voters approve it, legislature approves it, and you go a year down the line, that's kind of hard to stop at that, at that point. You, you've committed to it. And then the other kind of piece of it, even, you know, in between, I understand your question and why you would ask that. You know, but if the voters, let's say overwhelmingly approve it, I don't think a bonding, if a bonding request were to come through or something, I don't think that's going to solve all ills. You still may want to have some of those dollars coming in to do those projects. But that's certainly up to you guys. But I mean, that's, I don't think one thing's going to fund everything that you want to do. So I think you're still going to have to look at multiple resources. But again, that would be a decision point that you get to make as a council.
Thank you, council. Any more discussion? Yeah, maybe I'll un-think you if you vote, no, no, I wouldn't do that. No, vote your, vote your own situation, please. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. For preparation. Planning Commission variance, 1875, Red Leaf Court. Todd, it's your turn finally. Yeah, Mr. Steed, I'll acknowledge you're here too. Thank you.
He can propose it.
Go ahead, Todd.
Todd Severson, building and zoning. Recommendations, options, action requested. Approve the application by Sally Oltmans and Leon Steen for a variance of the sideyard setback to allow construction of a garage addition. The applicant's owner filed a zoning application requesting a variance of five feet in the sideyard setback to allow the construction of a garage addition. Pursuant to city code, the required side setback for their lot is 10 feet on each side of the house and attached garage. The planning commission, excuse me, held a public hearing on the application on July 9. The house was built in the 1980s, and the placement of the house on the lot created a practical difficulty in complying with the code, excuse me, as the sideyard setback is greater on the east side of the house than on the garage side. The combined total of the sideyard setbacks will be 20% as required, and there is undeveloped space on the adjoining lot adjacent to the proposed garage addition, which with the fact of the, that the frontages of the two homes are in different directions, provides significantly greater than 10 feet separation between the proposed garage addition and the neighboring house. The planning commission recommended that the variance be approved.
Counsel, the final vote comes from the council. The recommendation from the Planning Commission was to approve the variance request at 1875, Red Leaf Court. Counsel wish to take action, or do they have questions?
I would make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second it.
Motion Jenny, second by Scott, to approve the variance request at 1875, Red Leaf Court. I would be amiss if I didn't ask Mr. Steen if he had any comments. He didn't, same answer he had at the planning and zoning. So with that, any other further comments from the hearing? None? Uh, is that a, no, that is a motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Todd. Okay. Street closure requests. Did he want to present it, or are we? Okay. Well, I'll let him come in afterwards. I don't think there's any adjustments. Uh, street committee have any adjustments that are made on this? Do you want to continue? Street committee?
The requests are to close Fourth Avenue.
Okay, here he comes.
All right.
Okay, John, did you want to introduce it? Street closures. Your request is for, uh, street closures on Hot Dog Night, July 25th, from 4 to 8?
Not my reclosures. I believe that would be Jenny's. But yes, she is requiring us to close the street down so she can have Night to Night.
Okay.
And the Hot Dog Night is what we're talking about for the chamber.
We're talking two different things.
For the chamber, but they're both on your bullet points.
Yep, Hot Dog Night.
Trying to move along here.
Hot Dog Night, July 25th, from 4 to 8.
Yes.
And then Night to Night, August 6th, 5 to 7. I believe you and the chief have approved this as far as you're concerned.
Yes, as far as I'm concerned, we are good to go. I've talked to chief, and he's
So that's your recommendation to the?
I believe we need to unite and enjoy the camaraderie of the community, and all get together and have some fun, hopefully sometime soon.
Is there a motion to approve that request?
I'll make the motion to approve the request of the street closure for Hot Dog Night and Night to Night.
I'll second.
Motion made by Scott, and second by Jenny. Now you're getting me hungry, and we're going to unite. And also included in that one motion was both of them correct. Any discussion?
Thank you. Have a good night.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. This has been a long council meeting, it feels like. Park and Rec Commission, recommendation, Island Park Dump Station. John, where are you going? Oh, Tim was going to do it.
I'm on a roll, let's go.
Okay. So, the Island Park Dump Station, everybody read the minutes with the discussion that was held at Park and Rec. So we all know what's going on there. And in that recommendation, it says it's in violation of, in a, to have one of these in a floodplain, a dump station, right?
Correct. It's more or less grandfathered in. And since we've been having all these problems down at Island Park lately, MinDOT's still in the loop of trying to get back to us and let us know, because it's lost into communications with, up for the, what do you say, the water department or water side of the MinDOT situation. So I haven't heard back from them for almost two weeks now, three weeks.
Okay. And one question I was thinking of, that station, does, and that is connected to the sewer, correct?
Correct. That's connected to the sewer that goes up behind the pool.
When it was full of water, did that add water, or is it plugged somehow that it will not go into the sewer?
We have a plug into the camper dump site. Before it flooded, we'd plug that. But since the water got so high, it was running in through some other sewer stuff, through the pool, through the bathrooms and everything. I'm assuming the toilets were taking water since the water was so high. It was overflowing down through the traps and everything else. So we had to, as Steve can reelect, he was in there. It was overflowed because with the, um, Ryan Anderson, the water department and everything, we ended up sandbagging down to the manhole, pulled the manhole, had to suck the manhole out to actually find the hole to shove the plug in it, to plug it, because it was backfeeding up on the highway and everything, blowing sewer through residents.
So the recommendation from Park and Rec was to terminate that dump station. Will you, it just, I thought it said not use. Are you going to, can you physically unhook that and cap it?
Dump station, yes. You should be able to cap that. It's this T- oh, well, that dumps right into the pipe type deal.
Counsel, have questions on that?
You're going to close it? Is there another dump station in town?
No, there is not. We are working on that one for MinDOT and kind of waiting to see what happens. The baseball association would like to close that and do their interns and everything else. And that's another thing that's coming up down the road too. So they are going to be down there assessing their situation, it sounds like tomorrow, talking to Mike Jackson about it and everything today. So they will be down there looking around, snooping around, and deciding. So that's the only people that are pretty much allowed in Island Park at the moment, other than city staff, to do whatever we need to do down there.
And we don't have a campsite down there anymore anyway. It's all, the rivers took into care of it. And with the, just the dump station that, without a campsite, it's just not going to, not feasible to have a dump station for no campsite. But the idea is down the road, if we do come up with a campsite location, we can add one into that at that time.
Did I have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to close off the dump site down to Island Park.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on table from Scott, and second by Jenny, to close the park dump site, sewage dump site. Any comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's one of those things that we have to do to protect the city of Wyndham from floods. It's plain and simple.
Well, that's why all the campground's usually have dump stations. I always emptied mine. I mean, it's, you know.
Tim, you haven't said much. Did you want to comment?
No, I was just going to jump in to allude, you know, ours has been grandfathered in, but it's, it's not up to code as to the way it's sealed off. I mean, it's, it's open to the elements unless we physically go put a plug in that, you know. But that whole system between the, the public bathrooms there, where the dump station is, where that line comes across, where the pool connects with it, that whole pipeline is completely in, in really bad shape. I mean, it, it comes up in different areas when we're doing different things. When I'm backwashing the pool, it's coming up through manholes. You know, the, I think the piping and the infrastructure throughout that whole system that combines all of that is in really bad shape. And so if we can help minimize and mitigate that, would, would be beneficial. That's what I just kind of want to jump in with.
Thank you. Okay. We voted, correct? Okay. We are on to the liquor store. And declaration of surplus equipment and proposed disposition, that was in your packet, Steve? Thank you.
Okay, yeah, just in your packet. With our renovation at the liquor store, we had all new shelving put in. The liquor store used all the old shelving that it needed for the backroom storage area. There were some that was in real tough shape that got tossed. And, but there were a few pieces that John's got, and we're talking about gondola shelving, which is basically, you know, it's got shelving on both sides. There's kind of a metal support and under shelving on both sides. He's got a few folks that might be interested in that. It can go out and obviously in the local paper, but our MMBA, Minnesota Municipal Beverage Association, and also posted on our Facebook page. And he feels, you know, this is good enough that there might be some interest in it. And so he's asking that you declare the two 12-foot sections of gondola shelving and one 8-foot section of gondola shelving, declare them surplus and allow for disposition. Estimated value is going to be under that $5,000 limit. So we can do, just seal bids on that and have them come back. So that's the request being made by the liquor store manager.
Counsel, action?
I'd make the motion to declare the declaration of surplus equipment and proposed disposition.
I'll second that.
Motion by Marvin, second by Dennis. Yeah, stated in a motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel hiring recommendations, community center.
I've got that one too. So at the community center, our administrative assistant, Tara Kroll, resigned her position. And so we internally advertised and externally advertised for the administrative position up there. It's a full-time admin position. One of the applicants is McKenzie, Kersina, and she's currently an internal person. She works in City Hall. uh, person, she works in city hall office, and so they are, uh, they interviewed her, and as the Mountain State, she was the best person for the job based on her qualifications, um, for clerical computer skills, she has event planning, um, training, and, and also she's good at web design and web stuff, so, um, they saw her as a very good fit, we're very sorry to lose her out of the city hall office, um, however, uh, this is an advancement for her and good opportunity, so, um, where he's asking that, uh, McKenzie be hired as the community center administrative assistant.
I'll make a motion to hire McKenzie as a community center administrative assistant.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded for, uh, that, I guess, hiring. Question I have, have, uh, prior to making this, uh, will there be discussion on refilling the other positions, Steve?
That will be coming very, very shortly. We'll go to personnel, there's a couple of things we wanna talk about, yep.
Thank you. Okay, I'll ask for the indication by the council, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Electric Department, seasonal temporary line worker.
Jason Segura, uh, electric utility manager. So we did not budget for this position this, this year, um, but due to the, the things in the action memo, this, the flooding, and a lot of projects that are, have hard deadlines for this year, because they are customer requests to have in the county building, the hospital, um, the new development at Semstone, and then a potential feed out to a very large customer, which we are having contractor install wire for, but there is still a massive amount of terminating and things that we will still have to do, along with a generation plant and some labor that we threw into that to mitigate some costs, um, so we have a very, very busy summer, fall remaining, and, and the time is, is running out, so, um, we happen to have this individual that job shadowed us, he went to the Jackson Line School, um, Craigan Porth is his name, um, the crew got along very well with him for those couple days he job shadowed, and he had not come across the line job yet, so, um, I just asked him if he wanted to help us fill this out, I did, uh, I did talk to the head of personnel, and had a quick conversation with, uh, the commission chair, so, um, both were in favor of doing this, not normally go outside in reverse order of this, but, um, time was ticking down for us, so.
Sounds good to me, no more explanation needed. Is there a motion to approve the hiring of Craigan?
I'll make the motion to hire Craigan for the part-time help, for, for line person?
I'll second.
Motion Scott, second by Marv, to approve the request from the electric department. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, we got five minutes to conclude here, folks, on Steve's. I think he's said eight thirty, don't you?
If I wrote six fifty-four, I don't think it's in time.
New business. Yep, now all business. Counsel comments, Scott?
With everything going on in the city and in, in, how should I put this, in the United States alone, we need to take care of each other and take, take back what we have control of how we react to other people and how we deal with other people. We, as Wyndhamites, we, we took care of this flood thing, I thought was phenomenal. We, we took care of each other, helped each other out, I don't hear of any personal bickering, I don't even hear the online guy going at it, but I'm just saying, we did a really good job of what we need to do here in Wyndham, take care of Wyndham, and I do believe the United States needs to step back and take a look at what, how we are acting as people and individuals, and how life has changed people and changed life itself. So just, just slow down, take a breath, and think about what your next move is gonna be, 'cause your next move is your next move, and it's gotta be a good one. But I do wanna thank everybody for what they have done in the Wind, the city of Wyndham, and the commemoration, how we are Wyndham people, taking care of Wyndham people, and I do wanna, uh, add, uh, add on to it, how the outside of community people coming into Wyndham to help us out too, 'cause we, we needed the help, and it, it came up, and we took care of it, and I just, I'm an older feller now, and I can't do what I used to do, but I, I just wanna thank the younger generation doing for what they done and what they helped us out with, but I wanna thank you very much.
Jenny?
Okay, I'll try to make it quick. Um, I attended the annual Southwest Regional Development Commission meeting on July eleventh, and it was actually held here in Wyndham at the community center, um, I think we had a pretty good turnout, and the bus tour, we went and toured, uh, the American here in Wyndham, and Pullman Palets, and then we went over to Rieger Farms, they have a solar-powered hog farm, um, kinda over Mountain Lake Comfrey area, and then the Comfrey municipal buildings, uh, they did a project to install new LED lighting, so it was kinda good to go out and see the different projects that the Southwest Regional Development Commission, um, worked on, and hear the information there, so I decided to let you know, since I'm the liaison for the council for that, uh, group. Then encourage people night to unite, we've talked about that, I think, enough, um, but that's, the focus is on, uh, volunteerism, um, so I encourage people to come out and celebrate our volunteerism here in Wyndham. Um, then the last thing is, um, I had mentioned it before, but it's coming up next week, Monday, uh, July twenty-second, is the free public event, uh, with our national speaker, Jermaine Galloway, AKA tall cop, and he will be at the community center, six fifteen to seven thirty, next Monday night, free training, uh, anyone over eighteen, about THC vaping, the new changes, um, drugs, you know, detection, different things, it's just gonna be a very informational training, and then that follows, um, Tuesday, July twenty-third, um, there's an all-day training for professionals, so most of our law enforcement, our social workers, our school personnel, um, probation, you know, a lot of different professionals coming together, um, to get a long day training, uh, with this professional, so that'll be really good for our community, that we have, uh, some really good training, um, coming to town, um, he comes all the way from Texas to provide this training for us.
Thank you, Jenny. Jim?
Oh, I guess I gotta go along with Scott, um, about the people in, in the town and everything, that, uh, it amazes me, because, um, usually it's pretty hard, unless you have a big party, it's hard to get that many people together, and then with what, with what you said, Dominic, you know, what Bill was saying, I kinda have to agree with him. We hire, when, when he has furnace put in, air conditioning, you know, those are supposed to be professional people, uh, why do they have to have a permit if nobody comes to, I mean, I never had no problem, every time I had permit, Andy showed up, for no matter what it was, I don't understand why, uh, they didn't with him, I don't know, but, uh, I think it's, if you're gonna have to get, if we have to get a permit, I think that the person should show up to have, you know, to inspect it, make sure it's done correctly, which I'm sure it is already, but, you know.
Thanks, Jim. Marv?
Now that, uh, the drop-off site for your flood damaged items has moved from the high school parking lot to the county landfill, just, uh, keep in mind that you need to secure your load and cover it up. Do-it-yourselfers like myself sometimes get in a hurry, but, uh, people that live along River Road, uh, going to the landfill, they don't need our wet sheet rock and old carpeting, so just be aware, get your entire load to the landfill, and everybody will appreciate it.
Thanks, Marv. Steve?
Just right, thanks to all the volunteers, and thanks for city staff and council for all your work during the flood, we're starting to see the downhill side of that, and recovery is ramping up, and so, good to see the next step.
Uh, very well said, Steve, um, thanks to all the volunteers, everybody here appreciates it, and I know that, um, just outstanding support once again, uh, from our community, the organizers, and we'll look forward to seeing them again soon, uh, helping people get their bags to the curbside when it's time, so, thank you, everybody have a great night. We're adjourned by unanimous consent.